Good evening, it's 7:00 PM and it's time that we start our council meeting. If everybody could rise, Mr. Shamir, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. Mrs. Rossmarin, please read the roll for the September 8th meeting.
Mr. Arnold.
Here.
Mrs. Fenderbosch.
Here.
Ms. Gentry. Mr. Koz. Mr. Shamir.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Zuber.
Here.
Mayor Spetzl.
Here.
Law Director Ebert.
Here.
Finance Director Crossy.
Here.
Public Works Director Liskovic.
Here.
Thank you. Do any members of council object to the absence of Mr. Koz? Seeing none, okay, thank you. His absence has been approved. Now we go to the approval of minutes. And if everybody in the audience could turn off their cell phones, please. Thank you. The approval of minutes, August 25th. You've already received a copy of it. Does anybody have any additions or changes? Seeing none, then they will stand as printed and approved. Thank you. Mrs. Rossmarin, any correspondence?
I don't have any correspondence to report. Thank you.
Colleagues, any additional correspondence? Okay, then we're going to move now on to a very special time. There's a proclamation tonight, and this is in celebration of the 90th anniversary of Klingshern Winery. It's from Mayor Spetzl and State Representative Joe Miller. Mr. Klingshern, and your wife.
Do you want anybody else to join you up here for these?
My siblings, Jen and Neil.
Come on, let's go.
This is a family affair, right?
It has been for ninety years.
Like grapes are in clusters, right? So we're family.
If you mind, are you going to be reading yours?
Just briefly.
Okay. Okay. All right, well, it's great to have the Klingshern family, both familial and the family you've chosen to work with you and everything else here for tonight. Great celebration. I have a proclamation I'd like to read for you. Okay, if I can. Whereas the city of Avon Lake has enjoyed a rich and vibrant history. Early residents of the area were essential in laying the groundwork for it to become the thriving community it is today. And whereas in the early 1930s, Albert Klingshern, founder of Klingshern Winery, began producing wine commercially in the basement of his Weber Road farmhouse. Five years later, he built the original winery just west of his home. Ever since then, the winery has been a cornerstone of the local economy and community. Their spirit of innovation and appreciation for the art of viticulture has guided it in the pursuit of exceptional winemaking. And whereas through dedication and hard work, three generations of the Klingshern family have carried out the traditions that have been pivotal in the winery's success. They have demonstrated deep respect for the land and agricultural heritage. And whereas, their enduring spirit and commitment to excellence has made a profound impact on Avon Lake's culture and economy. They have created a lasting legacy that will be cherished by generations to come. And now therefore I, Mark A. Spetzl, Mayor of Avon Lake, do recognize and congratulate Klingshern Winery on its 90th anniversary. Make sure I say that correctly, 90th anniversary. And for this outstanding accomplishment, we extend to them our deepest appreciation for their dedication and contribution to the community, and wish them the best of luck in all their future endeavors. Signed this 8th day of September, 2025. There you go.
But wait, there's more. Isn't that what they say? More, uh, more Cabernet Franc, maybe? That's one of the good ones. I know, you do, it's really good. And I was promised by Councilman Koz that he was going to have a bottle waiting for us.
But he's absent.
I know. So I think that was his way of getting it. So, so as your state rep, and on behalf of my office, and signed by the Speaker, Speaker Matt Huffman, from the Ohio General Assembly, 136th General Assembly, I'd like to present this for your 90th anniversary. I would like to say it is very nice to hear when people say, oh, you have wineries in your district, and they rattle off yours as one of them. That says something about how well, was it your dad now that?
Grandfather started.
Your grandfather started, and you guys kept it all the way through and moved it out of the tub. But hey, this is something to be proud of, not for the commendation, but for the work you put into it, and the fact that you get to be here to celebrate your grandfather and all the family members that were involved. So congratulations, thank you very much, and we're going to have, I'm going to say, we'll do that, we'll do a picture next to you.
Uniquets, absolutely, sir. Except you're really tall.
We're going to do another picture. If everybody could come up here with the seal behind us. We're going to have Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor is going to be over there.
Book in this or something.
Yeah, I understand next to the pole. Right? Now it looks a little more.
There it is.
Okay.
Tallest to shortest.
Ready? One, two, three. And we'll do it on this side also. We're going to do it on this side. See which side is your most photogenic, right? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Well done. Oh, more.
Just one. Okay. I have a video, sorry. Sorry, sorry, one second. Time's up. No, wait, one second. I'm sorry.
There's still plenty more.
All right, got one. Thank you.
All right. Again, congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you for coming up.
Congratulations. Absolutely.
I would miss it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
So we're not finished with celebrations.
We're not done yet.
We're going to continue. So if the Klingshern family can find their seats in the audience, we'll be bringing you up again in just a little bit, okay? So we're not done. I think we should have more items with Klingshern on it because our audience was filled, you know, filling up on the one side. This is really good. This is such a great day. So the council has presented, also, there's going to be a presentation of a resolution of recognition. And what we're going to do is a little bit different this time around. And I am going to move, based on our Charter, Section 9, that in its entirety, Resolution Number 25-144 is read by our council clerk, Mrs. Rossmarin. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosch.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead. Mrs. Rossmarin?
Resolution Number 25-144. A resolution recognizing the 90th anniversary of Klingshern Winery and honoring the Klingshern family for their generational contributions to the community of Avon Lake. Whereas in 1845, Johann Michael Klingshern and his wife immigrated from Bavaria, Germany, settling in Old Avon, Ohio, where, as Michael, he purchased his first 40-acre parcel of farmland on Moore Road, later expanding his land holdings, and with his wife Maria, raised 11 children, four of whom survived into adulthood, thereby establishing the family's Endurian roots in the community. And whereas Michael's son Anton Joseph Klingshern, born in 1858, worked his families, worked his father's land, and after marrying Anna in 1889, established a homestead and family farm on Walker Road, where he and Anna raised 10 children, seven of whom survived to adulthood, and expanded the family's agricultural presence to over 248 acres, including vineyards and the establishment of the Avon Lake Feed Mill in 1926. And whereas Anton's son Albert Klingshern, educated in a one-room schoolhouse at Walker Road and State Route 83, married Teresa Conrad in 1922, and began farming the family's Weber Road land, where in 1935, he founded Klingshern Winery, transforming his grape juice business into a full winery following the repeal of prohibition. And whereas Albert not only expanded the winery and vineyards, but also gave back to his community through public service as a member of Avon Lake City Council from 1937 to 1946, advocating for industrial development that brought lasting benefits to the city's financial stability and growth. And whereas Albert's youngest son Alan Klingshern, salutatorium of the Avon Lake High School, class of 1946, married Barbara Ann Jones in 1955, and carried forward the family's legacy by dedicating himself to the winery and becoming a leader in Ohio's wine industry, co-founding the Ohio Wine Producers Association, which helped grow the number of Ohio wineries from 27 in the 1970s to over 400 today. And whereas Alan's youngest son Lee Klingshern joined the family business in 1986, married Nancy Janine Otullo in 1994, and co-managed the winery alongside Alan, continuing the family tradition as the next wine master. And whereas Alan expanded the vineyards from eight acres to 20 acres, and invested in the facilities and equipment in support of Lee's efforts to integrate the latest research and innovation, including sustainable practices, hybrid and vinifer grape varieties, and pioneer vineyard technologies in collaboration with the Ohio State University and the United States Department of Agriculture, ensuring that the continued success of Klingshern Winery in the 21st century. And whereas Alan and Barbara demonstrated their steadfast support and encouragement, modeled by generations of Klingshers before them, and with wise counsel, steady guidance, and quiet dignity, empowered Lee to pursue innovations and changes that would strengthen and sustain the family's winemaking legacy. And whereas for generations, the Klingshern family has a simplified faith, hard work, innovation, and community spirit, contributed not only to the establishment of St. Mary's Parish in Avon and St. Joseph's Parish in Avon Lake, but also to the prosperity of the local economy and the broader Ohio wine industry. And whereas the 90th anniversary of Klingshern Winery stands as a monument to the Endurian family, legacy of family enterprise, agricultural excellence, civic service, and community pride recognized both throughout Ohio and internationally. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Avon Lake, State of Ohio, Section Number 1, that council hereby recognizes and congratulates Klingshern Winery on the occasion of its 90th anniversary, and honors the Klingshern family for their remarkable contributions across generations to the growth, identity, and vitality of the community. Section Number 2, that the Clerk of Council shall include this resolution in the minutes of this meeting, and she is hereby requested to transmit a copy of this resolution to the Klingshern family as a symbol of the city's deepest appreciation and respect.
Thank you. Mr. Zuber?
I move for passage of Resolution Number 25-144.
Mrs. Rossmarin?
Oh, do we have discussion?
We're going to have suspend the rule first. Okay, you have to do suspend the rule, sir.
I move for suspension of the rule. Three readings.
Thank you.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosch.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Now I move for passage of Resolution 25-144.
In discussion.
Yes. I, this is one of the fun things that I'm going to miss when I get off council in January, so I just wanted to say that. I wanted to thank Lee and the family for helping put this resolution together. We went through a lot of different things there. There's a lot of stuff in there. And of course Valerie, too, on all the work that she did, almost half a century, half a century, I've been visiting Klingshern Winery. Lot of fun with friends and family. The Klingshern family has the history in Avon and Avon Lake on a lot of different things, industrialization of Avon Lake, whether it be Pinoc Park Way, and we gave you some more information on that today, but also BF Goodrich and many other things in Avon Lake. So I just want to thank Lee and the family for coming and for all they've done for our community.
Thank you. Anybody else on the city council have any other comments? I do. Not only, and I'm glad that they let me listen to everything, not only are we celebrating wine, but also celebrating community service. And I know how dedicated you've been to the Scout Program and the Eagle Scouts, and your family helped establish, not one, but two different parishes, Catholic parishes in our community, that today are very, very growing and expanding as we speak. This certainly is a family that is dedicated to service and respects the sustainability, respects the agriculture, respects the cycle of life, and is a wonderful example to the rest of us. I would like to, at this point in time, open it up to our other guests that are here in support of the Klingsherns. If any of you would like to come forward with something that you would like to say at this time, please come up. Mr. Tomine.
Tony Tominek, I'm president of Avon Lake Historical Society, and I had an epiphany about five minutes ago, because it seems that my great-grandfather came across from Arabia in 1845, and we probably sailed with your family. And yeah, I'm just going, wow, what a small world. When I think of Avon Lake, I see it in our city logo. I grew up next to grapes, around grapes. Grapes have been part of this history forever, and I'm honored to be able to say a few things here. It's not long, but I want to make sure. Three generations of the family, beginning with Albert and his pioneering start with his vision for growth, Alan with his vision for growth, and Lee with his training and dedication have each shaped Klingshern Winery into what it is today, a proud, lasting Avon Lake legacy. And today, we're honored to celebrate not just a business, but a family. Honoring the Klingshern family for 90 years here in Avon Lake, we also honor the tradition, the community, and the spirit that have made this legacy possible. So, thank you. I have a gift. I know. I shouldn't have overdone it, right? This cost me a lot of money, so.
The original sign. The two B's signs.
Congratulations. So for the one end of Weber Road was two Bs, the other end of Weber Road was a C. I think they've got it figured out now. I wanted to add one more thing. I've had an opportunity to work with Lee. Nobody cares more about grapes than Lee. I had, I have worked hard trying to get a grape patch at Peter Miller House because it's our legacy. And Lee's concern was that they were like children, and he doesn't want to plant anything that doesn't get taken care of. And so we've got that problem solved, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tomine. Anybody else with our guests supporting the Klingsherns? You can come forward now on any other topic that has to do with the Klingsherns. Okay, thank you. At this point in time, Mr. Zuber, it's back to you, you're the sponsor, to close out discussion.
I think I've said plenty already, and I think we're ready for the vote.
Very good. Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosch.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Thank you. It has passed. Thank you very much. Now we're at the time for public input, and members of the audience shall be permitted to speak once up to five minutes on any topic per our ordinance, Section Number 220.21A1. Good evening.
Good evening, Gerald Phillips, Avon Lake Concerned Citizen. I'm going to play a game with the citizens of Avon Lake. It's called Let's Make a Deal. One of my favorite subjects is ALERG. So deal number one is we have a TIF where we take $60 million away from the school, and 15 is used to buy property for the city. 15 is paid for improvements, so that's 30, and then the remaining 30 goes to ALERG for improvements. In this scenario, the city gets 30 million, ALERG gets 30 million, but the school district loses 60. Deal number two is rezone that property under 1219, which requires the ALERG to put at least 20 acres on that property for their development. City doesn't have to buy the property, city doesn't have to make the improvements, and the school district doesn't lose 60 million dollars. So which deal do you want? Another deal is the Avon Lake Regional Water. Deal number one is we form this Clearwater, where we, Avon Lake Regional Water gets one trustee, LARCO gets one trustee, and the county gets one trustee. Also, Avon Lake Regional Water donates the assets, like 95 million, with an option to purchase. Also, ALRW, the Regional Water also has to fund the cash flow initially because Clearwater doesn't have any revenue. So Avon Lake Regional Water will have to fund that. Now on the option to purchase, have an option to purchase all the assets of Avon Lake Regional Water for 74 million, but they get to deduct the loan payments, which will be 32 million. So we're left with 42 million, plus Clearwater gets to deduct all of the capital improvements during the lease term, and that's subtracted from the 42. So we could end up with zero potentially, if they make, you know, 32 million in improvements over 30 years. Also, the debt service that is being paid, you know, that 32 million, it's really being shared by 82% by Avon Lake Regional Water, 14% by LARCO, and 4% by the county. We have 11,099 current customers, 9,015 are Avon Lake Regional Water, LARCO has 1603, but those 1603 are under contract with Avon Lake Regional Water. So we're only going to get a benefit of 481 new customers. And LARCO doesn't have any assets because that pump station on 82 is owned by Avon Lake Regional Water. The county has a package plant that is probably under EPA edict and is probably failing, so they're going to contribute nothing. They don't contribute any cash for the funding. Deal number two is we keep Avon Lake Regional Water as is, as a very profitable entity that it has been for many, many years, and been run very, very efficiently. We can contract, just like we are with LARCO, we keep the contract in force, we can contract with the county to provide source, and we don't have to give up our assets. We don't have to give up control, because under option number one, we're going to lose control. We have one-third vote. Also, the current situation, the current cash flow from 2023 was 2.9. On their feasibility analysis, for each of the years, it's 600,000 or 500,000 cash flow for each year. So those are the two deals. The residents of Avon Lake, I hope you tell your council people what you think the best one is.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come forward on any topic tonight?
Good evening, William Zimmerman. Beautiful Avon Lake, sometimes more beautiful than others. So as Mr. Phillips was just stating, the Clearwater system, I think, is a bust. It's a horrible idea. It's a horrible idea. I was at the finance meeting earlier last week. Mr. Zuber said that we were running out of money, from the standpoint that we may or may not have extra money to put in the capital budget to do drugs. Is that a fair assessment, Mr. Zuber? So my point would be, let's keep Avon Lake Regional Water our own. Offer contracts to local municipalities if they want to be a part of it, and we could profit from it, creating money for the coffers of the city of Avon Lake. We owe nothing to the county commissioners. We owe nothing to LARCO. So from my standpoint, if it's a good running business, let's keep it that way and benefit from it. Now, one of my other topics is about the police chief Jeremy Betza. He was put on administrative leave on the 15th of August, yet I guarantee, none of you know about it. Administration has been keeping it under lock and key. I don't want anybody to know anything about it. I've been asking questions for a couple weeks now, still don't have anything. I'm being told the law director has to sign off on it for us to be able to get it public information. So now he's had an appeal, which I found out in the meeting this evening, so now I can go to the courts and hopefully something in there, not just the city commission. I just think it's an ongoing issue that this administration is non-transparent. They don't give us the information. It's going to be a month shortly that he has had this issue going on. I don't understand it. I had another issue with the fire department. I got blocked in between a bunch of trucks, and I would say part of that reason was the fact that the police chief, I'm sorry, the fire chief wasn't there. He wasn't able to give instruction. Nobody had told these people what to do. I sat there stuck in an accident scene on Electric and Curtis for 20 minutes. I thought was highly unacceptable. And now on to my other topic, which is the Flock system. We invested a boatload of money into the Flock system, put up these license plate readers at every entrance to the city, so we could track your whereabouts no matter where you went. When this came up for vote, I voiced my opinion against it because of the fact that I thought it was a violation of my rights. Now, in Norfolk, Virginia, that's what's happening. They're having a lawsuit against Flock. The federal courts have allowed it to move forward. There will be a trial in the future, and it's about Fourth Amendment rights. The fact that they're keeping the information for well over 30 days, people are doing whatever they want with it, and they're purposely trying to expand. They now have it all across the country. You can log in and look at every single car that's come in and out of Avon Lake. And so if you're law enforcement looking for somebody, hey, look, look who's in Avon Lake, Ohio. Let's go get him. Don't know if that occurs, but it sounds feasible. So I want to relay one story to you about this Flock system and how it can be abused. There's a police chief, a police chief in Kansas, who broke up with his girlfriend. She got a new boyfriend. He went on to this system 228 times to track them. 228 times. Do we know if our police department's abusing the system? We don't know. We don't know how many others are across the entire country. The point is, it can be done, and all of our information is available. Somehow, some way, I sure hope this goes our way in the courts, and so they can just get rid of the Flock system and the $250,000 we wasted.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else want to come forward on any topic? Anybody else want to come forward on any topic? Okay. Saying none, we are going to close the public input, and we're going to go on to the reports. Mr. Mayor, you're first.
Thank you, Madam Council President. Updates on a couple of projects, the Alps update, playground equipment was, installation of the major pieces was completed last week. Site work is going to continue, including the loop path that goes around the playground. The port-in-place surface is being prepared in the toddler area. Other equipment has yet to be arrived, but when that gets there, we'll have that installed, so it's moving along actually ahead of schedule, so that's good to see. And again, while I said this last time, while we understand everybody's curiosity to check out the site, please stay outside the orange fencing, it is still a construction site and potentially dangerous, so we don't want anybody going in there and getting hurt. The next project update, Walker Road rehabilitation, Phase Five from Mortal Railroad tracks continues. It's going to take approximately sixty days. Traffic is limited to westbound from Moore only. We have detour maps and further information on our website and Facebook. Recap of some upcoming events, this is going to be a busy couple of months, Saturday, the Saturday, the thirteenth. Community shred and Habitat for Humanity donations will occur at the Public Works Department. Now, that is from nine to noon. Blue by the Wood tickets go on sale September seventeenth for the event that is on Thursday, October ninth, and Saturday, October eleventh. Saturday, the twentieth, from ten to two, we have big trucks, always a very popular event, and one of our more popular events in the community. Saturday, September twenty-seventh, at ten thirty, we have the Homecoming Parade, followed immediately by a free Fall Fest that'll be going on until one o'clock at Blessed Road Park. Trick or Treat will be Friday, October thirty-first, from six PM to seven thirty PM, and that's it for the events. I want to have a couple announcements here that are good news. Our communications and technology team was once again awarded a Philo Award. This is a wards that go to multi, in a multi-state area for public government stations. Our team was a finalist for last year's Homecoming Parade, and Lucas Rico won another award, he's racking these things up. He won another one in the arts and culture events category for his summer concert event video that he did. Other awards, for the fifth straight year, I'm going to hold this up for the camera. For the fifth straight year, Avon Lake bested Avon in the Avon versus Avon Lake Community Wellness Challenge, and this is sponsored by University Hospitals, and it occurs at the Avon Health Center. This one was a little bit closer, maybe than the past, but we're glad to bring home bragging rights again, so congratulations to everybody that participated in the wellness challenge. And I'll make sure that Mayor Jensen knows that we did this. And again, one further, thanks to Ryan Smarch and the sixteen members of Christ Evangelical Lutheran Church. They spent last Saturday cleaning up our beach, and they gathered a lot of debris down there, it looks great, I took a look at it. So we in the community greatly appreciate their efforts and thank them for their work. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments to the mayor's report? Mr. Zuber?
Mayor, I just have a comment on the upcoming budget meetings that we're going to have. If we can get that information like the Tuesday before the Saturday, if you would be able to do that for us so that we have that, because in the past we've gotten it like one or maybe two days prior, so if we, the earlier we have it, the better off we can go, be able to go through it and study it.
We should be able to do that.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Yeah, I would say we worked out our schedule to make sure that you would have adequate time to review.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because I know in the past, past administrations, it's taken some time for us to get that, or we get it like the day before.
Yeah, no problem. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anybody else on any topics the mayor mentioned? Okay, at this point in time, we're going to go on then to the council presidents, and I'm going to jump right into what Mr. Zuber talked about so that everybody hears it again. Our first council budget work session will be in these chambers, and we set up around a table that publicly is invited, is October the eleventh, from eight to twelve. Then we're going to have another one on November the eighth, Saturday, again, from eight to twelve. Then November the fifteenth, we're going to have a third one from eight until twelve. And then the first reading in these chambers will be November the twenty-fourth. Second reading on the budget for 2026 would be December the eighth, and the third and final reading, and hopefully passage, by city consulate of the fiscal budget appropriations will be December the fifteenth. Are there any questions on that topic? If not, I'm going to move along to some others then. So the next CCM is going to be a work session and CCM on September the fifteenth. At that point in time, the Ad Hoc Committee for the Restructuring of the Boards and Commissions will be presenting during the work session. The next council meeting is September the twenty-second, and I'm looking to see if there's anything else. There is one other item. I do have something. There is a young, new business in town that is called the Curb Bros, and you have probably seen the advertisement in the newspaper. These are teens that paint your house number on the front street. You're probably wondering, why would council president mention this? Because this is a health and safety issue, and it helps our fire department find your address more quickly, and they just finished my house this afternoon. They did a really great job. That's all that I have. Oh, I have one more thing. In front of your desk, do you have that paper, the two papers?
Yes.
Okay. All of council are going to be receiving two documents, it's going to be emailed to you, and you're also going to have it. And what I have asked is for you to fill out a spreadsheet form with the hours that you spend on your committees, on the committees that you participate in, and reflect on your committees, because some of us have had some new committees with new tasks, and tell us how it's working out. Would you like them to be rearranged? Would you like these topics to be given to other committees? And your results will be going back to Mrs. Ross Maron. It's just part of what we're doing to be more efficient and more effective in what we do. Any questions on this? Okay, now we can move on to the law director.
No report this evening.
Any questions for the law director on any topics? Okay, we're going to move on to the finance director.
No report this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the finance director? Okay, we'll go on to the public works director.
The mayor actually covered most of my updates, but I did want to add just a couple tidbits regarding the shred event this Saturday. So Lorraine County Commissioners are providing the shredding truck through the solid waste district, and it'll be there from nine AM till noon unless it fills up sooner. However, Habitat for Humanity will be there for the duration from nine to noon.
Thank you. Can you tell us what all Habitat for Humanity will be accepting?
They traditionally like items that can be repurposed in their endeavors for construction of homes for, that they, they conduct through their, their platform, so. I know last year there was file cabinets, you know, gently-used furniture, windows, doors, paint, things of that nature.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, is there anything else that you want to add to this topic?
No, I think you covered it. I covered some of his, he covered, yeah.
Anything else, Mr.? Let's go back.
That's all I have this evening.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for our public works director? Okay, then now we're going to go on to standing committees, and I'm going to be asking our council people that if you have a reason to ask for suspension of the rule, that you explain it during this point in time for an item that might be on your agenda. Okay, the very first one's going to be Building and Utilities with Ms. Gentry.
Building and Utilities, next meeting will be next week, September seventeenth at six PM. We will have first energy in attendance to discuss project updates and discussing Outfall Stormwater and our regular business.
Thank you. Can you give us an update on Clearwater?
Yes, I forgot to mention Clearwater. So Avon Lake Regional Water had received the feedback from council last week, and they, they have taken the, the issue off of our agenda for tonight because they wanted to take some time and go back and see how they can implement the changes that we had requested, make sure that everybody's happy across the board, so they will come back to us. He didn't have an indication of how long it would take them to renegotiate what they were working on.
So they've taken a pause in the process?
Pause to the process, exactly. They listened to what we had to say and agreed that they would go back and take some.
Any comments up here on anything that, yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate what Councilwoman Gentry said, yeah, they're, they're definitely listened to the feedback, I think they heard the feedback, they understand where council is coming from and the administration, so they're going to try to put together an alternate plan, talking with the other stakeholders and come back and provide something that'll be acceptable for everybody.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Gentry or comments? Is that all, Ms. Gentry?
Yes, that's all.
Thank you. We're going to move on to Mr. Shamir with Serp.
Nothing major to report. We had an EAB meeting last Thursday, and we elected a interim chair, and that is going to be the vice chair that we elected, and the selection of an actual chair will probably be done at the October second EAB meeting. And we also have the Avon Lake Big Truck Event, which EAB will be representing environmental initiatives that are being dealt with within the city, and that's on October, I mean, September Nothing else, thank you.
Thank you. Did you have a call, sir?
No, we did not.
Okay, so someone came forward, but they haven't been elected yet.
Exactly.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Mr. Shamir? Okay, saying done, we're going to go on to Mr. Arnold with Economics Development.
Thank you. No official report. Our next meeting, though, is next Monday, September fifteenth, at six o'clock here in council chambers.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Arnold? Finance, Mr. Zuber?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Finance committee met last Monday here in the council chambers. We discussed several different items. First was the license plate fee increase. We had some lengthy discussion about that. What was presented to us was how we could do some different bonding to generate some more income, to do some roads quite quickly if we passed the increase in the license plate fee. The feedback that I got from most of council was that rather than increasing the fee for a bond to do roads specifically a large amount, they'd rather see the increase done and taking that money on a yearly basis. So we're, hopefully, we'll be able to move that out of committee with a recommendation next month. We also talked a little bit about the procurement policy, the new city procurement policy update. We've been dealing with this for a long time, the changes that were holding it up, and the new finance director had some other changes. There are a few other things that the mayor's going to be ironing out with the finance director, so hopefully we can move that out of the committee next month. Also, we had a brief discussion about the bridge here behind City Hall on Electric Boulevard, that, the bridge work that has to be done. We went over the finances for the city for August, and with those reports, we also went over the income tax report. Income tax collections are up three point four three percent, four hundred seventy-six thousand dollars over last year, which the total is, at this point in time, this year is fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars is the income tax we've collected so far this year. Like I said, three, four hundred seventy-six thousand ahead of last year, a three, three point four percent increase, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Zuber, any comments? Mr. Zuber, the income, the license plate fee that's being discussed, any increased revenue would need to go directly to the streets, is that correct?
That's correct. That money by statute has to go to
Thank you.
Street repair.
Okay. Next topic is with Mr. Smith, Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President. Human Resources met this evening, and we heard from the Human Resources Director on her report, which discussed some staffing updates, that apparently the city engineer, we had made an offer and discussed with a candidate to hire that person, but apparently we weren't offering enough money, so it was a woman, and she declined it, and so we go on to the next candidates to see who we, we might hire. They're collecting applicants for the Public Works Interim Assistant Director, and they did hire a fellow by the name of Andrew Matucci, who starts November, or September fifteenth. He comes from the city of Berea. Council had received information about him. He has been doing basically the same position up in the city of Berea and is moving here. He does live in Avon, so it is closer for him. And there's going to be, we also discussed upcoming positions that need to be filled, and it's a public works laborer, and I can't read my writing. Their interviews are next week, and the Engineering Tech Aid One, we have four or five candidates that we're looking at. And believe it or not, it's time for leaf season, and we discussed the potential for seasonal workers to begin picking up the leaves once they start to fall down. We also discussed civil service, and in that, there were, at the Civil Service Commission meeting September third, there were, there's a new exam for fire paramedic. They authorized the exam November twelfth at the Avon Lake High School at six PM. They have, they did remove a couple candidates who no longer wish to be on the Avon Lake Police Eligibility List, and the, there is a lateral entry police officer application process. There's seven applicants that have been received, and they've forwarded to the structured exam, which is the same thing that's happened with the technical aid applications to the structured exam, which is basically an exam, a exam to, an oral exam for them. Next meeting of the Civil Service Commission, the scheduled meeting of the Civil Service Commission is October first at four PM, and we also discussed that Civil Service Commission is in the process of hearing an appeal from the fire chief. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for Mr. Smith? Mr. Shamir?
Is there any information with respect to the city engineer that refused the offer, and how far we were when it came to compensation, and what discussions there were?
I know that the, what I ascertained from her, and the mayor might be able to fill you in more, was that we offered a position, but our pay range, our pays was not high enough for her to accept the position. I mean, I don't remember what the pay ranges were, but we passed those a while ago.
So is there any way to take the, take a look at the details of the interview process and the offer and things of that nature? Is that available?
I can meet with you and discuss that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Smith? Okay, Mr. Smith, would you go ahead and take on Mr. Cause's Public Safety and Health?
Sure.
There's two items on the agenda you're going to want to talk to.
Yeah, I just had those so that I could discuss them. There are two items on the agenda tonight for public safety. On the agenda for Mr. Cause, one is ordinance twenty-five dash one forty, authorizing the mayor to enter into a medical direction services agreement for the tactical emergency medical services. The response team of the city of Avon, Avon Lake and North Ridgeville with University Hospitals, he's discussed those, will only be doing a second reading of those. That's where the emergency response team discusses emergency reaction as, as people are being treated and going to the hospitals. And then Resolution twenty-five dash one forty-three, authorizing the use of an unneeded obsolete vehicle for training purposes and subsequent sale of such vehicle for scrap. That's a, I believe that's the fire department vehicle, not a Ford Escape, it's a, is it Escape? Yeah, that will be selling, that Is it Escape? Yeah. That will be selling, that we can no longer use. And so that's also on for a second reading.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on public health and safety? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on now to public service. I have three items on tonight's agenda. Two of the items are going to require suspension of the rule of emergency passage, and let me speak to those specifically. Number 25-146 has to do with the acquisition services for the sidewalk going from 83 to Sheffield. And then, just following that one, 25-147 has to do with the appraisal of that land for the sidewalks from 83 going west. And I know the public is very aware that we're involved with the sidewalk acquisitions right now, the right-of-way acquisitions going east. And we're just about done with those negotiations. Are there, let's see, the public service is going to meet October the 1st at 5:30 P.M. for the very next meeting. Any questions? Yes, sir?
Well, you said 83 to the Sheffield Lake line. You didn't say the street. The street's Lake Road. I just wanted to make sure you said that so that people would...
It's Lake Road, absolutely.
Because I made a call on that today, so I just want to make sure that you mentioned Lake Road there.
Thank you. It is Lake Road, right. Not Walker, it's Lake. Any further comments? Seeing none, we're going to move right along to Mr. Smith. We're back to you again with Planning Commission.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight we have on the agenda for Planning Commission, third reading of the vacation of the property for the utilities over on Shields Avenue. We also have some new items that are coming over from the Planning Commission meeting of September 3rd, which will be, the first one will be on for a first reading. It is temporary, I always call it temporary ordinance because that was how I used to do it. Ordinance number 25-148, which has to do with an approval from Planning Commission regarding the Avon Lake Historical Society designation for the Red Aircraft Warning Beacon, formerly mounted atop the Avon Lake Power Plant Smoke Stack. Mr. Tony Tominek was here for the Avon Lake Historical Society. He was here again tonight for Mr. Klingshorn. And I have asked him to come not only to the committee meeting, the CCM next week, but also come to the public hearing when the matter is heard, because it's important to know the good work, I think, that the Historical Society does for the city and the residents. And so that is on for a first reading tonight. And it's just the red beacon, and it's amazing how big the thing was when I, when it was in here, and I think everyone will be very interested in that. The second item is Temporary Legislation 149, which is going to be as an emergency. It's approving the improvement plan for Christchurch Industrial Subdivision. And that is for a road that is going to connect to the Pinoc Parkway. It's behind the church that is now on 83. Everybody here probably more remembers it as the Irish Heritage Club. There's a church and then Mr. Steve Schaefer, Schaefer Construction, has purchased some lots behind it. And the roadway is going to come off of Pinoc Parkway, go back and have a cul-de-sac. And we're asking for an emergency because the roadway needs to get started in order for the, make it in time for the end of the season with concrete and the other items that they have to do.
So are you talking about it being a suspension of the rule and emergency or just emergency?
Suspension of the rule and asking that it be declared emergency in order that that work can be done. We can hopefully start selling some lots and getting some, some revenue with income taxes for the city.
Thank you, sir. And the next one?
The next one, okay. Next is, the next two kind of go hand in hand with each other. And it's a kind of a chicken and egg situation. It involves Legacy Point Limited Major Subdivision Improvement Plan for the Avon Center Estates located in the southwest quadrant of Avon Lake. That is the quadrant that we have talked about when they came in with the preliminary plans. And it's back behind the Wildberry subdivision up near the railroad tracks. And in order for that subdivision to go through, it needs to have some vacation. They're going to vacate some prop, some streets, some old paper streets, and then they're going to re-dedicate new streets to, in order for the subdivision to go through. It won't affect Wildberry and it will come out into the legacy subdivision. So the vacation of the properties needs to go first, so I'm going to ask for a suspension of the rules on the vacation, but not on the improvement plans for that subdivision in case folks have questions on it. But it's a matter of trying to get the roadways in place and then we can look at the, everyone can look at the proposed preliminary plan and make sure that they have any issues. Both of these items passed six to nothing. Dr. Ma on the Planning Commission abstained from the vote, but I think it's because she lives in that area. But, and when the preliminary presentation was brought to us, the, there were some suggestions for some changes. They came back with all the changes and that passed unanimously as well. So that will kind of close out that, that end of the legacy, I guess it would be the southwest portion of the legacy subdivisions. So that's all I have for everybody. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Very thorough, thank you. Any questions or comments on any of these items? Okay, thank you, sir. Seeing none, we're going to move on to the mayor with the zoning board.
Get to that section here. Zoning board met on August 27th. There were five cases. Three variances were granted. One case was withdrawn and one case was tabled. The next meeting is going to be September 24th, and they have one case thus far.
Any comments on zoning? Seeing none, we're going to move on to Mr. Shamir with Parks and Recreation Commission.
Nothing to report. There, we're anticipating a meeting of the Parks and Rec Commission in the month of September, but the date hasn't quite been set yet. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Parks and Rec is working with the E A B, is that correct, on connectivity of the parks?
Correct. That is the intermodal, interconnectivity of parks via bike paths and walking paths is one of the initiatives that's between E A B and Parks and Rec.
Good job. Thank you very much. We're going to move on. Any questions for Mr. Shamir? Okay, we're going to move on to special committees. Mr. Arnold, you have short-term rental?
Yes, our next short-term rental ad hoc committee meeting will be September 18th at 6 o'clock here in council chambers.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Arnold? Mr. Arnold, anything else that you have? Okay, anybody else have a special committee? We're going to talk about the tree commission. The next meeting is going to be this Wednesday, September the 10th at 6:00 P.M. at the Old Firehouse. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on now to our agenda. Now it's legislation, third readings. The very first one is ordinance number 25-134. Mrs. Rossmarin, please read by title only.
An ordinance amending Chapter 1018 Municipal Tree Ordinance and codified ordinance Section 1065.99 Enforcement and Penalty.
Thank you. I move for passage of ordinance number 25-134. In discussion, we've been through this for a number of weeks. The goal was to bring the ordinance up to date with all of the agencies that we need to be in compliance with. One is with general language, and we changed it from municipal to city tree ordinance. We added the definition for ANSI A300 Arborist, along with caliper, critical root zone, diameter breast height, International Society of Arbiculture, that's ISA, and master tree plan, which we've discussed here, protected trees, a street tree program, and what is a topping, you're not allowed to do a topping, you just can't cut off the top of the tree, tree maintenance, tree preservation plan, and on and on. We also talked about, like I said in detail, the master tree program. We discussed also that's in this ordinance, what the process is for replacement of trees. And for those trees that are in the city street program, those are the trees that the developers put money into a fund that is on public streets and that one time only we replace those trees. Then we moved on and we said pruning and removal of trees on private property, that is the responsibility of the property owner. If the property owner has, someone has notified us that there's safety, health issue, and we notify the property owner that that tree needs to be pruned or removed, and they do not, the city shall, and they will, they will have to pay the city back. No oak trees or chestnut trees can be trimmed or removed between April 1st through December 1st to prevent the further spread of oak wilt, unless it's deemed to be a hazardous tree, which has occurred this past summer in three different locations in Avon Lake. And ironically enough, they were all with a utility, and they needed to take them down because they would have fallen on homes. We talked about the protection of trees. And then we went into penalties if one does not comply with what is within this code. Are there any questions anybody has? Any more discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, please call the roll.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Thank you. This has passed. Mrs. Rossmarin, please read by title only, ordinance number 25-136.
An ordinance approving a vacation for a portion of the Shields Avenue and Electric Boulevard rights of way and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith?
I move for passage of ordinance number 25-136.
In discussion.
This is the ordinance we, this is the third reading for the vacation of a portion of Shields Avenue and Electric Boulevard rights of way for the Utilities Department for an expansion of their building.
Thank you. Any further discussion by anyone? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Thank you. This has passed. Now we're into second readings. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only, ordinance number 25-139.
An ordinance amending the rules of the Civil Service Commission and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. This is the second reading, amending civil service rules of the commission regarding lateral movements for the lateral hires for the police department, along with the requirement of no nefarious activities having been done by the persons in question. And we'll have the third reading at our next regular council meeting.
Thank you. Any comments on this one from my council members, other council members? Seeing none, then we will go on then to ordinance number 25-140. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a medical direction services agreement for the Tactical Emergency Medical Services, T E M S, and related training to the Eastern Lorraine County Emergency Response Team, E L S R T, comprised of the city of Avon, the city of Avon Lake, and the city of North Ridgeville and University Hospital, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith, can you present this for Mr. Cause, please?
Yeah, thank you. This ordinance, number 25-140, is in the second reading. It's for medical services direction for our paramedics. The ordinance also has attached to it the medical direction services agreement, and we're on the second reading for this.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments by anyone? All right, then we'll move on to Resolution number 25-143. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
A resolution authorizing the use of an unneeded and obsolete vehicle for the training purposes and subsequent sale of such vehicle for scrap.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, again, will you present this for Mr. Cause?
Certainly. This is the second reading, and it's exactly as the title says. Thank you.
Any comments from anybody? Okay, now we're going to go on to first readings. Mrs. Rossmarin, please read by title only, ordinance number 25-145.
An ordinance authorizing a cooperative service agreement between the city of Avon Lake and the United States Department of Agriculture, Animal and Plant Health Inspection Service, related to the deer management plan, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Shamir?
Looking to pass ordinance 25-145, the cooperative agreement to manage the city's whitetail deer population on the second reading.
Thank you. Any further comments on this and from any of my colleagues? Seeing none, we're going to go on now to ordinance number 25-146. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a personal services agreement with O R colon Associates LLC for right-of-way acquisition services for the L O R U S-6 15.87 project, Lake Road, State Route 83 West to Sheffield Lake, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. I move for suspension of the rule requiring three readings. Mrs. Rossmarin?
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Thank you. This passed. I move for passage of ordinance number 25-146. And in discussion, as it was stated, this is for the right-of-way acquisitions. According to Section Number 59 of the Avon Lake Charter entitled Competitive Bidding, it authorizes the expenditure of funds without public bidding for personal services as defined in the charter. The city desires to retain the services of O R colon, A C O L A N, Associates, to provide for right-of-way acquisition services along the U S 6, Lake Road, from State Route 83 westward to Sheffield Lake Corporation boundary. This corporation is from Fairview Park, Ohio, and as has been stated, they will be providing right-of-way acquisition services. It includes project management, title reports, appraisals, value analyses, negotiations, and closing for an amount of professional services not to exceed $208,580. This is over 35 parcels. The ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure, and the emergency being the necessity to acquire right-of-way parcels for the installation of sidewalks on Lake Road and to comply with the requirements of the Ohio Department of Transportation grant, thus is for the health, safety, welfare of our public. The ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately after passage and approval of the mayor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Thank you. This has passed. Now we have ordinance number 25-147. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Martin Wood Appraisal Group, L T D, for appraisal review services for the L O R U S-6 15.87 project, Lake Road, State Route 83 West to Sheffield Lake, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. I move for suspension of the rule requiring three readings. Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Thank you. This has passed. I now move for passage of ordinance number 25-147. And in discussion, as has been stated, this is for appraisal review services. The city desires to retain the services of Martin and Wood Appraisal Group, L T D, of Toledo, Ohio, to provide appraisal review services in accordance with the Ohio Department of Transportation and the uniform standards of professional appraisal practice standards for what is called L O R U S 615.87 project along Lake Road from State Route 83 westward to the Sheffield Lake Corporation boundary. This group, as we have said, is from Toledo, Ohio, and their professional services shall not exceed $27,625. The ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure. The emergency being the necessity of appraisal services to acquire right-of-way parcels for sidewalk installation along Lake Road and to comply... Road and to comply with ODOT's grant requirements, thus is for the health, safety, welfare of the public. The ordinance will be in full force and effect from immediately after the passage and approval by the mayor. Any further comments? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll?
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Thank you, this is passed. Ordinance number 25-148. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance designating the red aircraft warning beacon formerly mounted atop the Avon Lake Power Plant Smoke Stack as an historic landmark.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, this is the first reading of ordinance number 25-148, and this has to do with the, again, the historical society and the beacon that flashed on the top of the old smoke stack. I have asked the historical society to be here for both the CCM next week and for the public hearing at our regular meeting, so that they can explain to the residents, you know, exactly what they're doing, how they're doing it, and why they're important to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. So there was already a public hearing in the planning commission, and we're going to be having a public hearing. Do we have a date yet set for that public hearing?
September 22nd.
September 22nd. I'm announcing this that the public knows, September 22nd. As Mr. Smith has stated, I think it's going to be a very interesting presentation, that Mr. Tominek is going to be actually bringing the item with him at that public hearing. Any further discussion by anybody on this topic? Not, okay, we're going to move along now to ordinance number 25-149. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance approving the improvement plan for Christ Church Industrial Subdivision and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, I move for the suspension of the rule requiring three readings.
Thank you, Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll?
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Thank you, it's passed. Mr. Smith?
As discussed in my planning commission report, this is a, for some land that is behind the old.
Sir, can you move for passage?
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. It's an exciting thing, so I had, anyway, this is, I move for passage of ordinance number 25-149.
Okay, now in discussion?
Yeah, this is for some property that is back behind the old Irish Heritage Club, which is now the Christ Church off of Pinot Parkway. It runs a little bit along our retention pond back there, and will open up some more development, and the developer was very enthusiastic about being able to get some businesses back there and keep that park going so we can get some tax money in here.
Thank you. Are there any questions by our colleagues on this one? Mr. Smith, I do have a question. This came to planning quite some time ago. Has there been a change in how that Schaefer Development Improvement Plan is going to take place?
Well, I wasn't there when the first plan came through. I do know that, you know, the plan that there is now, it ends in a cul-de-sac coming off the back, at the back, the parking lot of the church will be able to exit in, exit and enter into the church off this roadway, which also should help with some of the traffic on 83.
Thank you, I think it will be helping both entities. Okay, Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll?
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Thank you, this is passed. Ordinance number 25-150. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance approving Avon Center Estates subdivision number two, phase six, rights of way, vacations, and consolidation plat.
Mr. Smith?
I move for the suspension of the rules requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll?
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Thank you, this is passed. Mr. Smith?
This is the vacation and consolidation of streets off of Legacy, in the Legacy subdivision, in the furthest southwest corner of that subdivision. We were doing this as an emergency to get ahead of the improvement plans which are coming next, in order that all that may be recorded, and then the improvement plans can go forward.
Can you move for passage?
I sure can, move for passage.
Thank you. Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll?
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Thank you, this is passed, thank you. We have one more, and that's ordinance number 25-151. Mrs. Rossmarin, please read by title only.
An ordinance approving the improvement plan for Avon Center Estates number two, phase six, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, this one I don't have to move for passage, this is the second. This will be the first reading of the improvement plan for the Avon Center Estates. Again, this is in conjunction with the previous piece of legislation, 25-150, in order that the whole project may be put together, so, thank you.
And what is your intention, sir, with this one?
My intention is just to go through the three reading process unless I hear something different from the developer.
Thank you, sir. Any comments from our colleagues? Okay, at this point in time, we're going to have miscellaneous business and announcements. Mr. Mayor, is there anything from the administration?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any, your hand up? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, thank you. I don't know the particulars, but I know that if Mr. Cause was here, he would be wanting to talk about the Boo at the Woods. So if the mayor could repeat that for everybody, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly, let me get back to my information.
I apologize for throwing that curveball at you, but I know that he would want to do that.
I know that we want to make sure that everybody knows that tickets go on sale September 17th, because they will likely sell out within hours, so you need to have your fingers ready to make that dial or plug it in, whatever you got to do.
Two hours last year.
Yeah, very quick, so be ready. The inside event is Thursday, October 9th, and the Boo by the Woods Walk in the back property of the park is on Saturday, October 11th.
Thank you. Anybody else have any announcements, miscellaneous announcements? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Zuber, I'm going to need for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mrs. Rossmarin?
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.